Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. One second. My agenda seems to have gotten misplaced in all these documents. Here we go. All right. Thank you. First, we have the approval of the minutes for the meeting of July 15th, 2024. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, those stand approved. And next, we have no recognitions, communications, or presentations this evening, and so we will be moving straight into the consent agenda. Item number one from the consent agenda has been... Oh, public comment. My sincere apologies, everybody. So first, we have public comment, and I would like to invite up Mr. Jerry Marks. For the note of the public, when you come up for public comment, I'd ask you to state your name, your address for the record, and then please, for all members of the public, remember that this is your opportunity to address your council members, not to address other members of the audience or anyone who may be watching at home. So please keep your comments directed at us. Thank you. Mr. Marks.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Jerry Marks, 8250 Garland Drive in Arvada. Do you need phone number? I'm sorry.
No, thank you, Mr. Marks.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to come tonight, and I think you may have seen a flyer about... I'm part of Ava. I'm representing Ava tonight as a board member, and we're having a softball event in October, and our marquee game is Arvada Police playing Arvada Fire. And then below that, we have what I call the undercard, and we have utilities with the city. They're going to be playing. We have Parks Department from the city. Also, Apex has put in a team. So we'll have probably half a dozen games that day. It's going to go from noon to seven. We've got Major League Baseball umpires coming. We've got Dinger from the Rockies. And our PA announcers, we've got Pete McKay, who's retired from KBPI, used to do the Sunday Morning Oldie Show, and Jerry Schimmel, who does radio for the Rockies. They're going to be tag teaming some of the PA duties. We're going to have... Local businesses are all donating raffle prizes and things, so every half inning, we would love to give away a gift card or just whatever people donate, and it just should be a really fun day, and I'm just here to invite all of you tonight and hope you can make it. It's going to be a lot of fun. The ticket price is, for adults, fifteen dollars, and that includes two drinks, so it's really not that expensive when you add that up. And then children are five dollars, and under six is free. So if I can turn it over one second, too, to Bob Lovridge, if I have enough time?
Absolutely, Mr. Lovridge.
Boy, I gotta go fast. Bob Lovridge, Arvada Fire. First of all, I want to say that this is terrific because Arvada Fire and Arvada Police Department have a fantastic relationship. They actually get along extremely well, which is extremely unusual, and so I'm very proud of that, and our citizens need to be. And this is just one of those things that is going to be really fun, building that camaraderie. And there, yeah, there's some competitiveness amongst the two, but, for example, I was visiting with a member of the police department a few weeks ago, and I said, "So I understand if you had just scored a little higher on the test, you could have been a firefighter." And I got the response, "Well, that may be true, but you know, firemen need heroes, too." So that's the kind of camaraderie we have. But we are looking forward to this. It will be great, and I'm sure they're not very worried, the fact that we have some major league players on our team. Former, I should say, so.
Thank you. We appreciate both of you being here. This will be an absolutely fantastic day. I appreciate both of you and all your hard work and commitment to the community. All right. Next, we also have Rachel Hoff. Welcome, Ms. Hoff.
Hi. Yeah, my name is Rachel Hoff, and my address is 7995 Ingalls Street in Arvada. I'm also a high school math teacher in Jeffco, and I've been an Arvada resident since 2013. And I wanted to talk today about some English lessons that my church has started. About the time we moved into our Arvada house, we joined our church, which is The Rising, just up the road here, and in part because of the work they do with their community food bank. And I've had the privilege to volunteer in that food bank for the last several years, and I really appreciate the opportunity to help out community members in need. And in the last eighteen months or so, we've been seeing more and more new Spanish-speaking families, immigrants from countries mostly south of our border, some of them with truly horrific stories about the places they're coming from. And to better serve these individuals, we've begun teaching some beginning English classes on Saturdays. Our first term is nearly over, and our next session will begin on September 7th. So I just wanted people to know that this resource is available, especially if you know people who could take advantage of it, and also to let you know that we are hoping that this will improve communication in general in our community.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Gabriel Fallon. That's fine, but even, we don't allow public comment on the consent agenda, so I'd like to invite you up at this time.
Yeah, perfect.
I'm Gabriel Fallon. I live at 6180 Johnson Way in Arvada. We were just petitioning to get a fence, the privacy fence that runs along Ralston there, extended a little bit longer on our, along our property line. It's still technically on city property. The only real issue, I believe, is that there's a line of sight issue there because it butts up, it connects to Rensalar, and, you know, commercial trucks and stuff have to use that road as well. But I think that, and we've, we've added petitions for permits and those things, but we just, yeah, we're hoping to get a little bit more privacy there. We have a two-year-old daughter that wants to use the yard more, and it's just a very major intersection, and the bus stop is right there, and people are always, you know, kind of standing like in our, in our area. So we are just hoping to get it extended as far as we could along that back of our property there, and that's it.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Next, we have Karen Gerbach.
Karen Gerbach at 6872 Juniper Court, and I represent the neighborhoods of Forest Springs, Geos, Westwoods, Westwood Mesa, and Maple Valley through friends of Ralston Creek neighborhoods. But I'd like, I'm here tonight to tell you about a decision made on another RV storage facility in Arvada. In March of 2024, the Arvada RV and Boat Storage Facility up at 8870 Indiana Street requested an additional five acres they owned to be rezoned from agricultural to planned development to allow for expansion of their outdoor storage business. This business is family-owned by Gerald Nunez, and the land is located in Jefferson County, surrounded by the Arvada neighborhood, Whisper Creek, just before the Candellas Light on the right when you're driving north. The application was reviewed by Jefferson County Planning Commission, with Sarah Hutchison on the planning staff taking the lead. They used rezoning criteria of compatibility, conformance to the comprehensive master plan, mitigation of impacts, infrastructure and services, and health, safety, and welfare. They found that the application was out of conformance with the applicable goals and policies of the Jefferson County Comprehensive Master Plan in the areas of land use, physical constraints, and community resources. During the referral process, the City of Arvada provided comment in opposition of the case. An email from Rob Spantana stated, "It is inconsistent with our land use designation," and recommended that the county not support the proposed use. The application was recommended to be denied for rezoning by staff. The Planning Commission chairperson also denied the rezoning and stated, "When I look at the influence of the Candellas neighborhood, I can't see the compatibility. A compatible ZIP code maybe, but after that, RV storage doesn't meet the expectations of the county or the City of Arvada. And the land use decisions run with the land, not the owner. So we have to look at what serves the public interest, which is the entire northwest Arvada neighborhood. I'm not able to support the land use. So I hope the Arvada Planning Commission is as wise, if something comes forward, for them to look at. All the neighborhoods represented for this RV storage facility we're looking at are stable and established or rapidly growing, like Geos, with another 400 homes being planned right on the other side of Indiana if that new project goes through. We seem to need a southwest subarea plan, similar to the Candellas northwest subarea plan that was mentioned by the Planning Commissioner, to provide a vision for growth south of the railroad tracks along Indiana."
Apologies. Your time has expired. I'll give you a few more seconds to wrap.
Well, along Indiana to Highway 93 while protecting the wildlife corridor of the Ralston Creek and Trail. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, I will bring up Dan Bradley.
My name's Dan Bradley, 8047 Field Court. I wanted to follow up with the last meeting regarding the veterans and the services they receive or don't receive. I am a Vietnam veteran, and I, like many of you, are concerned about their well-being. The Veterans Association has an extensive program to take care of veterans, so if anybody says, "Well, veterans can't get taken care of or aren't getting taken care of," I want you to please make note that you can contact, and I'll give you names and phone numbers, addresses. The Veterans Association, and if you're homeless as a veteran, you can contact HUD-VASH. They're located at 3836 North York in Denver, phone number 303-294-5600. If you would take an individual to that location, they will ask them for their DD-214 and some form of identification, a government identification, and they will house them. If you have zero money, they will house you. If you have relatively good income, they may take a portion of that to subsidize the housing, but you will get housing. The second one is abuse, substance abuse. If you are a victim of substance abuse and you want housing, that does not play into it. They don't ask you any of those kind of questions. They just find you a place to live. If you do have the substance abuse issue, you can go to 1700 North Wheeling Street, Aurora. That's 720-723-6952, and that person will be given the opportunities to have a large variety of different programs and counseling. And also, in the HUD-VASH program, they will give you an extensive programs to help you get jobs if you need one, to give you counseling, to give you direction in your life. So if anyone has a veteran that is in need, there's really no excuse for them not to get the services. They're readily available, and I just gave you the phone numbers so that anybody can contact those people, and you can be taken care of accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then with Ms., apologies, Rainier Gerbach. I realized, I thought you would be presenting with Ann, and I see now you probably wanted it stacked. That's my fault, and I am sorry. Yes, come on.
Good evening. Ann Katsburg, Rainier Gerbach. You live at 6872 Juniper Court in Geos. We're here to address the council on the 6800 kilometer development. The developer proposes the use of aggregate surface pavements placed over nearly unmitigated landfill. The August 23 TERRICON report finds full removal of the landfill debris as cost prohibitive and therefore recommends a surfacing scheme described as unstable with inherent high risks, unpredictable movement up to two feet, requiring frequent maintenance and periodic replacement. The pavement scheme is presented without knowledge of structural loading, but offers recommendations somehow based on experience with similar project. The applicant has been unable to date to identify any project that would even remotely qualify it as a similar project. AFPD will require an all-weather asphalt or concrete paved access road, as well as hydrants throughout. Designer integration with the landfill at large are critical, considering the site at high risks during construction and operation of the storage yard. The documents submitted today do not convey what exactly the applicant intends to build or whether any engineering has been performed to support the submittals by the applicant. Current submissions have failed to address construction, operational risks, and do not present a comprehensive and integrated design concept. There is concern that the applicant may not use the Arvada Code of Engineering standards for November, October 2, 2023. Here are several key takeaways. How can the interior drivelanes, parking surfaces, and fire access road be designed to any level of competence without knowledge of basic vehicle loading information? Design of significant movement and instability, including collapse due to nature of the debris, even with adherence to a stringent yet undefined maintenance and replacement protocol. Ability to find and establish and maintain a currently undefined moisture, optimum moisture content during and post-construction without exacerbating stability. A disconnect between the GEO check report requiring new gravel surfacing, whereas drawings for site plans, erosion control, and drainage plans require recycled asphalt. The GEO check report highlights the unavoidable risk of deep long-term movement of the existing fill and landfill debris, requiring periodic replacement, frequent, likely year-round grading maintenance is critical for proper drainage and therefore the strength and stability of surface materials and underlying subgrade soils. The fire access road, depending on design, construction may not be subject to the same instability and movement as the vast majority of the site. Anticipated erosion losses, subsidence, instability will impact drainage, and the critical optimum moisture content will have the following consequences: resurgence of methane production, reopening of pathways, increase in pavement instability, increased maintenance or replacement. Loss of aggregate...
So, hi.
And we'll restart three minutes for Ms. Katsburg. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Ann Katsburg, and I live at 15062 West 69th Place, Arvada. So to continue with what Rainier has already shared, loss of aggregate surfacing via wind forces and ruddling with result in loss of strength and poor drainage. The proposed cure, application of MGCL, is a palliative ban by several Colorado counties, given its impact on water quality and aquatic benefit macroorganisms. Utilities outside of the office building constructed on or within the existing fill materials and landfill debris will experience long-term movement in the order of two feet or more. Submittals do not include passive methane mitigation. Intrusion of methane into RVs was dismissed by the developer out of hand without offering supportive modeling or testing. The TERRICON report of August 2023 is clear. Long-term movement from unimproved landfill debris cannot be quantified due to the nature of the debris, and the reduction of this type of movement is only possible through complete removal of fill and debris. This development is not just novel. It lacks code guidance, modeling, and textbook support. There is simply no precedent of an RV storage facility of this magnitude placed over a legacy landfill with such minimal attention to risk assessment and mitigation in the middle of established residential communities. This development received its lifetime through a VCUP issued by CDPHE. VCUPs for legacy landfills are issued on a highly focused set of criteria: soil, groundwater, air. VUCPs do not require an environmental assessment, fully ignore the impact of any development during and post-construction, and the large potential of resuscitating, resuscitating previously dormant pathways. Colorado revised statutes, 2516308, environmental assessment requires an environmental assessment based on the current and proposed future use by the property owner. The developer plans on leasing the site to an unknown operator. The developer is located in Florida and protected by at least one LLC. One of the public's key concern is, will the applicant or the chosen operator conscientiously approve and finance any added costs of investigation, testing, overexcavation, and engineered backfill, or will they walk away from the project, potentially leaving open excavations that could cause health and/or environmental problems? The number of caveats about the high cost of overexcavation and engineered backfill only increases the concern that the applicant will walk away if unforeseen problems arise. It is incumbent of the City of Arvada to assure that any development on this site fits the comprehensive plan, protects bordering residents and the residential communities, and is safe and protective of the environment and established ecologies. This development proposal, as submitted, has a single focus.
Ms. Katsburg, I apologize. Your time has expired. I'll give you a few seconds to wrap it up.
I think I'm almost done. Okay. Reduced development costs by externalizing future costs. Thank you for keeping the safety and well-being of residents of Arvada in the forefront when you make decisions for our community.
Thank you very much. Those are all the pre-hearing signups that I have available for this evening. Is there anyone else in chambers who would like to address the council at this time? Seeing none, Ms. Rush, we have none on Zoom. Okay, then I will close the public comment portion of this evening's agenda, and I will open the consent agenda for this evening. We have eight items on the consent agenda. The first item has been removed by the request of Councilmember Marriott, and we will take that up at the close of the consent agenda. So with these eight items, bear with me. I will read quickly. We move to, or consent agenda items are: R24-075, a resolution approving an employment agreement between the City of Arvada and Linda Haley for services as acting city manager; R24-076, a resolution approving the Fourth Amendment to an employment agreement by and between the City of Arvada and Rachel A. Morris as city attorney; R24-077, a resolution approving the Fourth Amendment to an employment agreement by and between the City of Arvada and Catherine C. Kurtz as presiding municipal court judge; R24-078, a resolution authorizing Amendment Number Three to an agreement between the City of Arvada and Kennedy Jenks Consultants, Inc., for professional design services for additional engineering consulting services related to the north trunk sewer improvements, thereby increasing the contract amount from $1,024,221 to an amount not to exceed $1,128,087. R24-079, a resolution authorizing change order number one to an agreement between the City of Arvada and Anderson Mason Dale Architects, PC, for professional architectural engineering design services for police evidence storage and crime lab in an amount not to exceed $117,500 in the first year. R24-080, a resolution approving an agreement by and between the City of Arvada and Gabriel Patrick Fallon and Jennifer Ashley Fallon for the grant of a revocable encroachment license to install a fence upon the top retaining wall in Ralston Road adjacent to 6180 Johnson Way within the public right of way. R24-081, a resolution authorizing change order number one to an agreement by and between the City of Arvada and APC Construction Company for 2024 Phase One Payment Resurfacing Program, Project Number 24-SD-01C, in an amount not to exceed $3,912,903, and apparently five cents. And R24-068, a resolution authorizing Amendment Number Four to a construction management general contractor, CM-GC, agreement by and between the City of Arvada and Archer Western Construction, LLC, for the Zephyr Zone Five Tank, Project Number 24-WA-10, for purposes of awarding Phase Two services, thereby increasing the contract amount from $4,078,293 to an amount not to exceed $4,893,063. That's all. I will accept an emotion. Councilmember Farray.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. All votes are, that passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next, I will open previous consent agenda item number one, which is R24-074, a resolution approving an employment separation agreement between the City of Arvada and Lori B. Gillis. Councilmember Davis.
I move that R24-074, a resolution approving an employment separation agreement between the City of Arvada and Lori B. Gillis be approved.
Councilmember Marriott, you wish to speak?
Yes. So I'll be voting no on this separation agreement. You might think that coming from me, this is based on fiscal responsibility, but it's actually not. I think, given the the treatment that city manager Gillis received at the hands of this council, she's earned every bit of this, and I think, and I'm fine with that part of it. There is, however, a clause within this agreement that I wish to express and be absolutely clear about that I do not consent to, and that is a non-disparagement clause. So for that reason, I will be voting no.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis, Mayor Pro Tim Mormon? Councilmember Davis, we need your vote. There we go. All votes have been cast. That passes six to one with Councilmember Marriott being a dissent. Thank you very much. I will close that item. Next, we have a first reading. Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that CB24-010, an ordinance permitting concealed handgun permit holders to lawfully carry a concealed handgun at the Arvada City Hall located 8101 Ralston Road, be approved on first reading, order published in full, and a public hearing set for August 19, 2024, at 6:15 p.m.
Thank you. And for any member of the public with interest in this item, please note that this is simply to move it to a hearing. This is not a vote on the item itself. All right. And with that, all votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. We have no public hearings this evening, and so we do have one item under other, which I will now open. I believe Councilmember Davis will be addressing this item, which is a continuance of public hearing for Texas Roadhouse Major Modification Request from the Land Development Code subsection 5-1-3-1B2 that requires buildings adjacent to a pedestrian priority street to have a minimum height of 25 feet and to have at least two usable floors for the building generally located at 5550 Wadsworth Boulevard. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. It has come to my attention that there was a procedural irregularity in the initial public hearing for the Texas Roadhouse application for major modifications. Specifically, our rules of procedure require that the applicant be given the option for a continuance of a public hearing on an application if only an even number of council members will be present at a meeting. This did not occur before the public hearing for the Texas Roadhouse application on July 15, 2024, where only six members of council were present. As a result, I would like the council to reconsider its decision made at the July 15, 2024, public hearing to correct this procedural irregularity. In order to reconsider a matter in a subsequent meeting, the council needs to temporarily set aside the council rules of procedure. As a result, my first motion is to set aside the rules. I move pursuant to Rule 9B to temporarily set aside the city council rules of procedure for purposes of making a motion to reconsider an application voted on on July 15, 2024.
Thank you. Counsel, this is a vote to reconsider the rules or to set aside the rules, not on the motion itself. Mayor Pro Tim Mormon? Okay, there we go. That passes seven to zero. The rules are set aside. Councilmember Davis, you may continue forward with your motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Now I'll make the motion to reconsider. I move that city council reconsider the Texas Roadhouse Major Modification Request from the Land Development Code, subsection 5-3-1.B2, that requires buildings adjacent to a pedestrian priority street have a... to a pedestrian priority street have a minimum height of 25 feet and have at least two usable floors for the building generally located at 5550 Wadsworth Boulevard. The reconsideration to occur on a later date after notice to the public.
Thank you. If council will cast their votes to reconsider this hearing, that passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. That closes that item, and since we have no public hearings this evening, that brings us into our second public comment portion. Quick, quick one this night. Do we have any members of the public who would like to speak at this time? Yes, please come forward, sir. Welcome. I'll ask you to state your name and address, and you heard the general rules earlier, so please go ahead.
63, or 6335 West 71st Place, Arvada. And I just wanted to address the council and the supplement staff that during the pre-council meeting that we had upstairs, I had a coughing spasm, and I just want to apologize deeply that I didn't excuse myself earlier than I should have. So I just want to acknowledge I'm very grateful that occurred, and I'll make sure not to have that happen again. And I want to say thanks to Mr. Pfeiffer for calling me out on it. And so anyways, I'm just very apologetic.
Mr. Myers, I very, very rarely will respond to a constituent, but that is very kind, and you were excused. Please do not feel bad about having a cough, okay?
And I deal with nasal drainage, and that builds up, and that's what brought that about, so.
You're fine, sir.
All right, thanks.
Ms. Rush, do we have anyone on Zoom this evening? All right, seeing none, I will turn it over to reports from the city council. Seeing none, Ms. Haley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Hi, City Council.
Hi, Ms. Haley, welcome.
Thank you. Just a quick reminder for the workshop session that we have scheduled next week. We do have two workshops on the agenda. One is on CDOT 101, which should be very interesting, and also looking forward to a sidewalk assistance workshop. So more to come, we'll see you next week.
Thank you. Ms. Morris?
Want to go first?
Sure.
She'll hang, she'll hang up the phone real quick after you talk, so. Any special requests from the CDOT, it was asked of me as well, so if there's any special requests. I threw out some I knew, but please shoot me an email if there's any.
I have one for you.
Let's confirm.
When are they gonna start the I-70 and Kipling project?
I knew it, I knew it. And you know what? That was the one I forgot to tell them, and I should have remembered that one. But if you would like to shoot me a text or an email, I'd make sure they, they can give you an update on those topics.
Thank you very much. Ms. Ambrose, did you have one? Or Councilmember Ambrose? Okay, thank you, Ms. Morris.
Nothing for me.
All right, we're out before seven. It's a good night.